I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is our regular, scheduled, eight and four thirty. Board of commissioners, I said that to me, I'm the board of commissioners meeting. And I'd like to welcome you gentlemen. You really need the point to be here tonight. We came out, these conditions awful. I'll look at you, I tried to go home back before this, and there was a car turned over in the creek, at the end of Draken Creek Road. And there was a tree across the road, right down below my house. So it was an interesting day, I'm sure, that's the way all of the counties. Let's keep those in mind that are at work in the, to, to see the progress. About any announcements, Jim? If you can, please. Mr. Hagan. All lines clear, we move on. We're going to have a moment of silence, a stand, after that, vice commissioner Hagan, if you would please, and pleasure me to speak.
I thank Mr. Hagan for remembering our manager, his family itself, with tremendous loss. It was great to have another little weekend, but, just having fun this afternoon.
Thank you. Pleased to meet you.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please. Change your time for the hearing. We will go ahead with that, but you wait until you get there.
Technically, you should wait until the time out.
I figured you'd say that, I just wanted to ask you.
You got something you can do in the end on that?
We do, we do. Mike, can anybody sign it?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir. I just say, I appreciate it. The chair's department, I don't mean to knock you off, but Mike Graham was here every time we meet. He doesn't forget, had broken the V-5s or anything like that, but it's just good to have him, good to have you in the building. And we appreciate it, making your charge of honor. Doug Woodruff is here, I see Doug in the back. Doug is going to speak to Macon County Bill of Rights. Doug, good to have you.
Would it be appropriate to ask the commissioner, Mr. Hagan?
Sure.
I've, you know, you've seen me a few times now on the same subject. And I was wondering if the Bill of Rights has been discussed at all by you, Commissioner?
I think we've discussed it, but not yet. We've taken no action on that. There's not been a deliberation on it, Mr. Hagan, or anything like that.
To my knowledge, there hasn't been any public action, any connection to the day he's discussing the issue, that has happened.
Right. It is an ordinance, of course, presents some difficulty according to some views, although Pennsylvania has a very similar legislature to North Carolina. And this ordinance was modeled on the state colleges. Pittsburgh has a similar one, and actually, it actually hounded his, roughly, the commission there decided to go with a standing ordinance, which prohibits any noxious industrial activity beyond light manufacture, you know, normal activities of that sort. When I first talked to some of you individually, I know several of you said that you were not that familiar with fracking itself. Since that time, I hope that, you know, there's been some education on that. I saw both of you, Jim Davis's forum and Harlison Penzer, although, again, that, the spin on some of those points where you're talking self-sufficiency. Self-sufficiency, yet North Carolina is advocating for an export terminal, has already spent taxpayer money to, to market our gas in Europe. And also, a lot of the comments on no wealth combination from fracking, which is just untrue. I didn't see anyone, I may have missed you, at the Mining and Energy Commission hearings in Selpa. There were eighty people who spoke at that hearing, and there were eighty people who spoke in some way against fracking. There was a group of people in blue shirts, Quinn and Allison reported on that, and they had shirts that said, "Shay Oh Yes," but they were paid by, who knows? They came as a group, they were gathered at a homeless shelter, given shirts, and were the only pro-fracking group at the Mining and Energy Commission hearing. I've heard the word hysteria used quite a bit, I've seen it in the paper, in some letters, and yet, the people in general who spoke at that hearing were, it was the mayor of Hayesville, the mayor of Webster. There were quite a few technical people, engineers, some scientific knowledge, and quite a body of well-informed citizens. So I, I guess in conclusion, what I want to say is, this is an issue that's, that's not going away, it's, it's ongoing. I've got another stack of positions to lead with you tonight. I mean, it's not huge, but it brings the total to three hundred and thirty-four that are supporting the Bill of Rights. And I, I would ask you to consider that, but the, just, by way of aside, Chester, the environmental law division at Duke University has said they will, they will defend any attempt by the gas and oil industry to enforce the provision that chokes local opposition in fracking. And if you haven't seen anything but Jim Davis's forum, I would, I would urge you to come today and tomorrow to the library. We're hosting our Triple Divide, which is an excellent documentary, and it's in all the states. So, thank you for the time, just say good good.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Did you, it said there was a copy of Bill of Rights attached, I don't think there is, we got.
Oh, let me.
I think you did deliver one of the previous meetings.
Yeah, I usually, usually I pass it to companies at each level.
Okay. Diane Cotton is here. Page two, address Read to Me. Diane, welcome.
I'm here first to thank you for supporting Read to Me in the past. If you're not familiar with Read to Me, it is an effort by several community members to get books in the hands of preschool children, so that they're more ready for school when it's time to begin. In the past, you have given us funding in the community funding pool, and we really appreciate that. I understand they're not going to this year, but what I'm here to ask, to tell you tonight is how important Read to Me is to our community and to our children, to show you just a little bit of statistics, and to ask that you, although you're not going to fund us through the counting funding pool, that you privately and publicly endorse Read to Me. In the past, Read to Me began about three years ago, so I'm gonna, and you have to forgive my little, because in my purse, but it didn't get around, so. The statistics from five years of the beginning of kindergarten reading test that we get, it's called the test, Reading Comprehension Test, and in this test, children simply have to show you the front of the book, they have to show you a word in the book, they have to show you a letter in the book, and maybe tell you what they think is happening in the book from pictures. Before we began Read to Me, I don't have to go around, about twenty-six, twenty-seven percent of our kindergarten, entering kindergarten students could pass that test. For the last two years, which is a full year after Read to Me started, that has gone up to about fifty-one percent on average. So, thank you, that's. I just want to stress the importance of getting books into the hands of our children. We work with the Highlands Reading Council to sponsor Dolly Parton's Imagination Library. It's thirty dollars per preschooler per year to provide them with a book that comes in the nails and then, once a month, until they turn five years old. But every year, we have to pay the thirty dollars for them. Right now, we are averaging about eight hundred students, or eight hundred children, in Macon County, preschool children who get the books in the mail. So I'm just here to encourage you to hopefully support us and privately, if you'd like, it's, like I said, it's thirty dollars a year to sponsor one child.
Diane, do you remember how much, so you were funded, the commission funded you last year?
I, yes, but I, I do not remember.
Do you know how much?
It was, last year's, I don't know, it was one thousand seventy-nine dollars.
Was that his, that was his fee of funding?
That was true, right, right.
And then he retired, and you were not obligated to pay the charges?
Right, right, I just wanted to.
You know what you asked for this year?
I don't know, I didn't know.
I don't. The request was for twenty-five hundred dollars.
So that was one to quality children. So that's why I was here to come and talk to you about tonight, and I appreciate you listening. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, I can say that I definitely support the Read to Me, it's wonderful thing for kids to read, before leaving the world, kids don't really have the opportunity to read at lunch, or at this conference, or cell phone, to get better information, or, or that's, it's available anyway, so, I think it's more than a second's worth of reading, but it's a big part of the, of the organization.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. That was all I had as far as public comment, and if anybody else here that wants to speak, it's hot, sign it, I know everybody else is bringing their own ear here, so. Unless some of the reading ones off, they're, about the weather. Chester, we close them to six fifteen, do that here? It's six fourteen, I won't use discretion to go in. You okay with that, Jim?
I've got six sixteen, so.
Oh, well, not fine, probably. Five West Main Street.
Well, you're a.
It's there. With the entire public hearing ordered, marking date six sixteen on Chester's clock, this is Rural Operating Assistance Program, R O A P, application, and Ms. Kim Angel, Lake County Transit Director, is here.
I thought you were there as well. This is, as you stated, the Rural Operating Assistance Program. There are three programs funded under that. All state money, this is federal money. The EDTAP program, which is the Elderly and Disabilities Program, the employment, which provides a very small amount for employment transportation, and the World General Public Force supports the general public transportation, which is passengers who are not supported in the human rights agency, who don't qualify under any of the other programs. The total amount is one hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven, once the final budget was released, the state, that seems to be the amount that we got allocated. There's a formula allocation, I think, that's how that's being planned. We use this money to, it's all for operating house, so it covers driver salaries, gas, vehicle maintenance, such as that. And we're here in the public hearing portion. I'm assuming nobody signed that. So, if you've got questions, comment, just ask them.
Do you have any questions? I think we've got them there in advance, and we talked about the total one hundred and ninety-seven.
Yes. We have actually already received twenty-five percent of that.
You should remind me, Kim, this has, this has no ties to the regional thing, or whatever.
No.
It's totally different.
This is totally related to Macon County, not North Carolina, right? This is, this is money that's out of Kanku, which is one of the general programs.
Any other questions, any other questions at night, I'll close the hearing. Chester, I think the request is for us to consider approval of the application at this point, so.
That is correct. I would point out, in connection with the paperwork that was attached to the agenda, there needs to be some specific language authorizing the application to be completed, I assume by Kim Angel, since she's the one who completed it. There also needs to be some specific language authorizing the county manager and finance office, as well as chairman, to make the certifications, which are contained in the documents. I think those things should be specifically reflected in the county papers.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the application for transportation of operating assistance, and also in that motion, authorizing the transfer of, Ms. Angel and our county manager to sign our documents, that this, make certain that.
Do we have a second, to the most, motion second, I think, in discussion? Hearing done, all the favor of the motion say aye.
Aye, for a aye.
That vote is aye. Thanks, Kim.
All right. We're in the public comment, period, adjustments and approval of the agenda. Do we have any adjustments that can be made, Mr. Hagan?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If you look under eight reports and presentations.
Yes, sir.
If you'll notice, eight C, we have Mr. Coward and Ms. Alderson here to present the grant for a hospice inpatient facility. There's a prior commitment that Mr. Coward needs to attend, if we could switch A to C, and make C A, to A C, that'd be great, and also.
Chair, would you be okay with that? We're bumping you.
Yes, all right.
Anybody object to that?
Yes, sir, and if we could also, under ten new business, we need to add item C, consideration of awarding building contract at Parker Meadows to Worth Construction, add item D, consideration of change order to the original contract presented by Worth Construction, and then item E, consideration of awarding well-drilling contract to Head and Brothers Weld Drill at Parker Meadows Recreation.
Those have been added, generally, object to any of those, I would be happy to. Diane, you saying, Mr. Hagan, you add, they go up?
Yeah, hold on, let's see, sort of give an idea of the Appalachian Trail, the other towns, trying to make a deal going down here, will make them pretty best, I should, okay. The student.
We can do that under reports and presentations, you know, asking for action, like, in addition.
Let's make that A B. Mr. Hagan, Appalachian Trail. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, on the appointments, we do have some paperwork that was abated from the agenda, for some appointments to the County Heritage Center, that board needs, we will have some critical votes coming up, and they've asked for a board be approved, except for the board. The paperwork was approved on time out of damage detector, we just didn't get it in the box.
Come to put hands on that, we've got to get steps up.
So you got a name?
One in mind, the mayor of the state.
Well, we have the board feeling that, the board not had a sense of critical application, but Mo Bryant has applied to one of those issues, and I don't know where the paperwork is, but without objection, I'd like to put that on the, to the issue, too.
Okay.
There were two slots, and there were two applicants, and I forgot who the other was, sorry.
Okay. Okay. You said that position, you were in that position. Okay, I think you moved up, please. Thank you, ma'am. All right, I would very recommend that we approve the agenda as, as amended by our county manager, Mr. Hagan, Mr. Hagan. All right, we have a second, for the motion, and a second, in discussion, hearing done, all the favor say aye, for a aye, that note passes. Proposals and presentations, we need funding for, no, C, oral. And just full disclosure, oral, no matter the conversation we had this afternoon, sometimes it takes me a little bit to connect the dots, and I apologize for that, but I knew this was coming up, and when I saw it was under the Department of Commerce, the bell went off, I was appointed by the governor to that committee that makes the decision, well, that funding thing, so I made a call today to Dr. Pat Mitchell, who's over that, and into the ethics statement that I signed, I really can't take part in anticipation, because I'll be making a decision on the other end about if, if this gets approved by the Department of Commerce, then I'm on the board that makes the decision whether or not to fund it. So it would be inappropriate to be, to be a part of the discussion, so I would be for it or against it, I would tend to chair the meeting, but just make the conversation oral mode, and I talked to Chester about that, and he agreed that I should sit this out, so, but we welcome you.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman, thank the board, and this is my first opportunity to hear the word is, and it's a real pleasure to do so, especially for the type of calls that we come before you tonight, for I am representing Hospice House Foundation, WSC Inc., which is actually a corporation completely set in, I listen, Michael. Michelle Alderson has been president of that organization since its inception, and we started working on this, and I just asked Michelle, how long have we been, since we've been working on this?
Since.
Since 2004. We've been working on this dream for the, for the people of Macon, for, and indeed, on West Virginia, for ten years. And this, a hospice house, is when people, when hospice is serving on people, and, and they can't be at home anymore, the idea of hospice is to let people go to their end at home, and to possibly, and hopefully die at home, or sometimes that can't happen. Sometimes at the burial end, they have to go into a home. And if any of you have ever been to the, to the Care Partners Hospice House in Asheville, you know, been in that place, they're, they're not like a hospital, they're wonderful places that are comforting, and, and they're designed to do what they're there to do, and that's what the dream here in Franklin is, there's not a hospice house west of Nashville. The closest hospice house is the Care Partners Hospice House in Nashville. Pointing out that Care Partners is a completely on subsidiary admission, as is Angel's, so they are now, Care Partners and Angel are now sister subsidiaries admission hospital. The effort has already been well underway, and Hospice House Foundation, WSC, has already acquired the facility, has already acquired a certificate of need from the state, the facility is the, is the driving house of Doug, Doug Strickland, grateful, I'm sorry. And it's been completely paid for, bought and paid for by the largesse of one of the citizens of this county, who has demonstrated tremendous, tremendous willingness to support our people again, and again, and again, and again, and again, and I don't know that they will be using their name here, and they will, and I don't have their permission to do so, but I'm sure you all know what I'm talking about. It's, it's already, this, this effort is already rested in the process of, to pursue this dream. But just acquiring an old house is not enough, the amount remaining to be, to be funded is four million dollars, that includes a one, and I've, I think I told you, we'll never mention, but it's four, it's basically four million dollars that needs to be raised in order to add the addition, and to do the renovations that are required, and to do the improvements that are required, and to have the funds to have the facility operate for a year, they want to have a year's value in the bank before they get started. The Department of Commerce, as the chairman indicated to you all, has a facility that takes state money and infuses it into local government to be in turn infused into this type, this varied type of, what they did is, the, what, what the statute says is that the money goes to renovate old, out-of-use, commercial properties, to, to reinvigorate those commercial properties for the community, to create jobs. This, this effort here will create six permanent jobs, at least initially six permanent jobs, and that doesn't include construction, way more than that, construction jobs for a couple of years as it's being completed. And it lists the type of facilities that you are, that are favored, and the top one on the list, in the statute, Mr. Jones, I believe, is healthcare facilities. So this is exactly what the legislature intended.
Rule, rule.
Rule of healthcare facilities, as a matter of fact.
No, that falls into, it's called building reuse, or re-fund in, in that, in that bracket, or, or building reuse.
And there are at least five people I'm talking to that know more about this than I do, because all of us run into this situation in our lives, and need this sort of thing, so sometimes you get to know more about it. So the question had arisen, if the grants made to the, to the local government, and the local government in turn passes that grant along to the Hospice House, and whether Hospice House doesn't complete, can the money be clawed back? Can the money can be clawed back? But it's a very attenuated possibility. Gentlemen, I'm telling each of you, it is a very attenuated possibility under the Act. And so what we came up with, in order to, what Michelle came up with, in order to answer that possibility, and to get rid of even the attenuated possibility, is that the money would be left in the county bank account until the last money came out to complete the construction, in other words, to hang the curtains with, to buy the sheets with, that's, that is the idea we came up with. So here's the immediate need, the immediate need is that they have about a million dollars raised already. Sure, just a little bit south, the million dollars they have already, that the foundation has already, they have to, that leaves a free million dollars to go. State, state was crediting, it has given a challenge grant, that's got to be matched by another two million dollars, another two million dollars, and that is why, and that challenge grant goes away unless this money can be raised fairly rapidly. early ready. So that's why, a very good way to get this money, and it doesn't have to be in their account, it just has to be available to them. So if the county could go ahead and procure this grant, and the hospice house, the cost of doing this, $5,000, which the hospice house is legally allowed to pay on behalf of the county, and herewith offers to pay on behalf of the county. And then the county passes that money along to the foundation, but not until the end of the construction project. At that point, when they, when they get the million dollars together, they get another billion from state village credit. And then they're, they're well on their way to raising the full amount to meet and make this dream happen. There are, at this time, three hospice operations operating in Mayfair County, and they are Four Seasons, which is out of Hendersonville, and which is generally recognized to be premier hospice operation in North Carolina, which Michelle explained to me, and I'm not going to ask questions now, but it is. West Care, which is now by Duke Life Point, does hospice operations in Mayfair County. And Care Partners, which of course is now the sister entity with Angel Hospital, by mission, also operates a hospice, does hospice operations in Mayfair County. None of these entities have an inpatient facility. None of these have hospice centers. There isn't a hospice house west of Asheville. So the idea-
Well, there is one, and I'm here with the mayor's department.
Okay, thank you. This tells you what kind of person we're doing.
Do you know?
So in any event, the Hospice House Foundation, WSC, the client, this entity, does not, will not operate this house. It does not operate, it does not run a hospice operation today. It, I can say never will, but it does, because what they, what their certificate of need is for, is to create the house. And then they will lease, I suppose, the facility to an operator. And when they got the certificate of need, the state, the next step in general was to send out a request for proposals to, and they had to send it out to all licensed hospice operators in western North Carolina. So that request for proposals went out to Four Seasons, Haywood, West Care, Angel, and several others it went out to. They got, they received back two proposals, one from Haywood and one from Four Seasons. Those were the only two that responded that they would like to. Now, this isn't like letting a construction bid, it's like, who will come here and operate this facility? There's no, it isn't mentioning that organization. Only two expressed an interest in that. And so the operator of the house would be Four Seasons. But it's important to note that the home, the hospice house in Franklin will be open to all hospice operators in western North Carolina. It won't be limited to the customers' lives, patients of Four Seasons, but rather it will be open to the patients of Angel, the patients of West Care, the patients of Haywood, Rice City, Robbinsville. And Michelle said they had two requests coming in from Cherokee and Clay, wanting to know if the house was ready yet this week. So it will be available to all of the citizens of our western, probably six counties on the side. So it's not, it's certainly available to the patients of Angel Hospital with regard to Highlands Cashers Hospital, the other hospital in the county, that they had actually turned their hospice license over to Four Seasons, and Four Seasons is now operating a hospice operation that Highlands Cashers was previously operating. So we would respectfully request the board to step into the breach and to be willing to accept the grant and say pass it along to the hospice house. And thank you very much.
How many people in this town have a house?
Twelve.
Twelve in this state?
It'll have, it'll be able to house 12 people. And Mr. Haveson, that breaks down into six terminal people who are, and I'm just going to have to state it in layman's terms, people who are, who are gone within a couple of days. And sometimes people who are in hospice can go in and out. They can be in for, they can be on their own for a while, then they go into the hospice house, and they're back out, hospice is taken care of at home. That's generally considered people that have six months or less to live. And there'll be six, there's six rooms for those people, and six rooms for the people right at the end.
I realize it sounds like you should have something much bigger than that. I've been to a lot of meetings, I've been to shows, and that's been a real claim, to ask for a motion.
Second, to state that.
Well, I think in this particular situation, administrative roles, you don't just receive the money, you'll have some administrative roles that you'll have to serve, as you do with any grant that's providing somebody. And I think it is important to slow down this moment and realize that that is something that needs to be taken care of really quickly. The county manager probably needs to be tasked with making sure we've got somebody that can handle those administrative roles, because if they're not properly handled, then that creates problems. You've got to doctorize and control your team.
So the motion is that we participate in the application process with the old hospice, hospice house. Hospice House Foundation, WSC. And I'll explain this a little bit when we talk about this process that they're fairly new, and this board that I'm holding is born in January, so it's almost seven, eight months old. And it replaces what used to be the rural centers. It's the center of the Department of Commerce. Under this, there are three different areas that they were doing grants, and the legislature is creating several billion dollars for this. And so we, there's 15 of them left to be, and we meet periodically. It's been, I think we just had our fourth meeting this year, so every couple of months we meet, and grants that are applied for up to a deadline, I think they're done in about two weeks, is that right? Could we have a meeting? So we didn't jump on it? If you're going to get this, but if you don't, you'll just miss the next, the next cycle about two months later. Yeah, there's some, there is some critical urgency to it because of making sure that it's not the only money that has to be put together to give dispatch a grant. But the more you get, the more you get, and that's- Well, just so you know, it's something that's funded by the legislature, it's not like you miss this deadline, the money's going to be gone. It's not mainly the thing we meet, we get every couple of months, meet Raleigh, and certify the applications to come in. I think, I think the fact that this board presumably is going to support this endeavor is going to give it some, some movement that it, that you'd be needing. I can say this without being afraid, people, people give a boost. Yeah, and they need a boost, they need a, they need a boost financially from the community, as much of a boost as they can possibly get financially, the money coming in from the community, if anything.
The normal way it's not being said is that the community with hospice, Michelle first, that's like, are we which is? Yes, we are. And well, it's, it's for the family, it's not only for the patient, who like Oracle said may be just terminal and not licensed, it's for the families. It's just as much for that family as it is for that patient. So those of you who have been to Highlands, Jimmy Tate has certainly been there, I've been, I've been to the house in Nashville.
You've been to Care Partners, sir?
Yes, sir, and it's, if you want, you know, you'll find out it's much for the families, Oracle. I mean, yes, the patients are, and it's in a home setting, you'll never know you're in a hospital. I already did the room, and Angel Medical Center is part of the hospital room. You try to, but you just can't do that. I mean, we done all we could to make it still-
I didn't want to say that, Mr. Bill. Yeah, you did.
Yeah, I mean, you, you do everything you can to make it a home environment, so my hats off to Michelle Alderson, and these folks over ten long years, who kept, who kept at it, and we, we're thinking, we're, we're, because it's a good thing for the metroplans and everybody that's in the county, so it's a good thing, so thank you.
I wish that we had the whole board here to hear this, that would really pump up the enthusiasm that sometimes they got to get low on their enthusiasm, and this is good for them. Thank you so much. Any discussion? Here you go, all the papers, motion, second, I was saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes four, four, and a second.
Thank you, Michelle. All right.
Thank you for coming. I can say this now, the board passed that, I didn't influence in any way, I apologize for the senior case on you. Good luck.
You've been back a year ago, and we were on that dust drive, and we just supported that thing.
Thank you all, thank you guys. Thank you.
And I know the community is certainly helping your support also, that's been a help, that's also just amazing, your commissioners, thank you.
What is your next filing deadline? If you know.
I think it's November 4.
November 4? Yes, yeah, two, three weeks.
Yeah. See, to have the applications done, it just has to be-
There will be a need for a caring group.
And our grant writer, Mark Goldstein, would be happy to talk to you. I'll give you his email and his phone number.
Yeah, that would be great.
He can send you with a, available by cell phone tonight, if you had any questions. He does them all the time, so he knows all the things out.
Well, that's, that's great to know that that resource will be available. We have Chester and Dan, the legalities, and they'll have to answer, and you know where it can, so.
Just getting ready to ask.
Yeah. Mr. Rollins, thank you. Mr. Rollins said, in terms of the, the take care of the forums in that county, he said that's what we're hearing. We got the, we got the paper. We got the paper.
Thank you.
Thank you, I wish you a peace then. All right, Karen, we didn't delay you long, you're actually, that way you're the, you're the next two, I think we have to make the county public library board trust in the bylaws, and also the funding, so you can do those wherever you want.
I'm here, we're in two hats, so we'll start with it. Probably the easier one, and that's the Macon County Public Library Board of Trustees bylaws. Those bylaws had not been revised for many years. The Fontana Regional Library recently revised their bylaws to bring them into alignment with their new regional agreement, which this board passed back, not quite two years ago. So we did some bylaws revisions at Fontana, and then we'd like to also revise the bylaws for the advisory board of the Macon County Library Board of Trustees, which this board does appoint. So we're bringing those bylaws to you for your approval. There are no significant changes, primarily it's in a new format, again, to align with the Fontana Regional Library bylaws. Probably the only change that I would call your attention to is in the number of trustees. Here to four, it's been seven, and we are asking for a range between seven and nine. We think that will allow greater participation from the community sitting on the library board. Be happy to answer any questions about that, but as I said, primarily I think most of those changes are really more in the formatting of the document.
We've shown how this happened, lives on the library board. The reason they wanted to go from seven to nine is just simply that in some off month, it's hard to get some folks, you know, in the wintertime, to have a, have a form presence, and so, but they do a great job, and it's just formatted for, it's more understandable if you look at these, I think.
I have not studied it carefully, and I just was going to ask, what is the board?
It's a majority, so it would have to be four presently.
No major changes to the, to the process, and that's what mattered, I make a motion that we adopt the bylaws as for more trustees, trustees as recommended by our board.
Here are motion, and a second, any discussion? Here you go, all the papers, say aye. Aye. That motion, you can answer.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that.
Community funding.
Okay, the community funding pool, I have served on the community funding pool for many years. It's been in existence for at least 10 years, maybe 12. I wasn't on it when it first started, but came on fairly soon. The amount of money allocated by the Board of Commissioners for nonprofits through this funding pool has not increased since we started. So it's $50,000 this year. We had 15 agencies apply for a total of $94,500. So clearly, we could not meet all of those needs, and our recommendation reflects the fact that we're only asking for your recommendation of the money that was allocated to us at $50,000. I would request that you consider increasing that amount of money. You had Diane Cotton from Read to Me, and the library is very involved with Read to Me as well, as you might imagine. We are also interested in getting books into the hands of young children, and in fact, everyone. We want to get books in the hands of everyone. But the Read to Me program is a very important program, but we simply were not able to fund that program. And part of the reason is, we simply don't have the funds available. So I would respectfully request that you consider allocating more money to meet the needs of nonprofit agencies who work very hard in the community to satisfy some of the needs that aren't met through local or state or federal government. So the total number of agencies that we're recommending funding is 10 agencies at $50,000. I believe you have a list of the agencies that we're recommending. I'd be happy to leave those out if you want, or other than that, I'm just asking for your approval on the recommendation from the Community Funding Pool Task Force, which has met and reviewed all of the applications and made some tough decisions.
Oh, the reach request, Karen, the $10,000, does that, does that go to operations, that go to building?
That one goes to operations.
Are they all worthy of funding?
They are, they are indeed. We're very sad that we're not able to fund all of those agencies. Primarily, we're looking at a lot of health and human services needs. You can see that Kids Place, Reach, the Community Care Clinic of Highlands Cashers, Angel Medical Center, CareNet. A lot of the projects, a lot of the nonprofits that we're recommending funding for are to meet basic needs in the community. There are a couple of grants in there, allocations in there for education and cultural projects, but the majority are health and human services. That's where we see a really strong need.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a question real quick, for your information, I know it's not an easy, an easy job, and they hash back the bill, and I'll take hard decisions, and I'll follow it, and out of this, I have learned, for your information, pretty important.
Thank you.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Well, a lot of these people who supply us money, they're just going to, anything they say. But also, I take them, I make money available, I feel it's real easy, I attract new people to it. And I'm, I'm trying to roll down, couldn't get our biggest, but let's ask them for a pretty large jump this month. And I feel like-
We're not, we're not putting in the money. We're just going to spend the money that we already approved.
It's $90,000. It's $91,000.
And you asked for $94,000?
No, I just wanted to let you know how much had been requested, so that you could see some of the need.
You can look on the total.
You can look on the total.
It's tiny, right? We didn't get more.
Right, the total requested was $94,000. Right, the total requested was $94,500, but we did not recommend allocation on that. We kept it at the $50,000 that has been allocated to us as part of our budget.
And this is dividing over that $50,000.
Exactly right. I do think it's good information for you all to know how much other agencies are requesting. So that was really just for your information? Yeah, sorry, didn't mean to confuse the issue.
I apologize, but...
No problem.
End of discussion. Questions? I would say, Karen, I think your request amount has been, that amount has been static the past dozen years. I think they, I'm here to serve you correctly, I think they'll start in about 2000 or 2002, 2003.
2003, okay. It's been around a while.
Just to make sure we've organized, we said this year, obviously, maybe if we could look. What percentage of our budget that represents, maybe we can do a little bit of that. Possibly, we'll see if we might consider it.
And all the Read to Me that's shown up, Read to Me might be a quick, so I believe the commission set up one time before.
We did.
For how much?
Several of you gave different, I think, whatever cash you were talking about. Great, yes. Yes, you did. And I don't know, she didn't mention that or not, but everything that gets donated to Read to Me is a tax deductible donation, as we're under the Rotary umbrella as a nonprofit. So as individuals and business owners, that all of you are, it would be great. And the $30, we don't charge any of the, we don't, she didn't, it's $30 a year for a child. We don't charge the parents that. Anybody can sign up for free as soon as their child's born in the hospital. They get forms, and we go out in the community constantly to get more kids signed up. And out of the eight hundreds that we currently have enrolled, we've graduated over a thousand, which means they've aged out of the program. So it's something that, the Dolly Parton's one tier of what we do. We'll be at Public Fest, at Halloween in the Park, and to give out books and other things to the community. That is something that we're doing.
And part of the discussion, and we'll move on from the labor form, but one thing you can notice where this money goes is these organizations are, there are a lot of volunteer hours. So the dollars we put into there are multiplied many times, because you're not, and every pays people for these services, you get people that, like with Read to Me.
Lots of volunteers, yes.
A lot of volunteers. So it makes, our tax dollars, it really makes a good profit.
As you say, it maximizes the $50,000 that's allocated from tax revenue, and really, the volunteers who are part of those programs make a huge difference. It also can provide some leveraging for those organizations when they go out and look for other donations or grants. So it's, we really appreciate your funding for those agencies.
End of discussion. Here you go, all the favoritists, approve of the allocations as presented, $50,000 if you would indicate a aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Be sure to do that. Thank you.
The next thing, Ms. Ramsey. We had Ms. Margaret Ramsey, but the chair was informed that Ms. Margaret wasn't going to get out of the weather today.
No, I was there with her this afternoon, and she did apologize. And I do come for you today to expressly thank you for your previous support of declaring November as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. As you know, our family lost my sister-in-law to pancreatic cancer. It's a deadly disease. You have the proclamation before you, but before we sign that, if I could just look at my notes and focus, you know, maybe I can get through this. Several things about pancreatic cancer I think you really need to be aware of. The first being that it's the fourth leading cause of cancer deaths in the U.S. It's in the bottom of the top ten cancer killers for funding, for research. There's no screening for pancreatic cancer. Pancreatic cancer is expected to be the second leading cause of cancer deaths in 2020. And unfortunately, with no screening and with no symptoms that are truly representative of, you can say specifically, this is for pancreatic cancer. I think a lot of families in Macon County will be like ours and be affected unfortunately by pancreatic cancer. Many other cancers in the top five are declining, however, the pancreatic cancer is on the rise. And I do believe that we need to address it. Hence the reason that we partner with PanCan to bring before you this evening the Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Proclamation. I will tell you that the treatment options for pancreatic cancer are very minimal, and with, like I said previously, no screening method, we are, it's really crippled also by the lack of research funding. So pancreatic cancer is nasty, and we all need to be aware of it, because if you're not an advocate for your family to try to follow up with any of the symptoms of maybe a backache or some other symptoms that you can find on our website, if you're not an advocate for your family, I'm just afraid that one day you might be one of these members that are being represented. As commissioners, we're coming before you, and we're asking that, I'm going to pass out in just a second a little bookmark, and there's a website on Bird, meaning Girls Raised in the South with Attitude. And that's what she had, we had her for two years after being diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. Most people die within the first five years. Ninety-three percent of, or ninety-four percent of people with pancreatic cancer die in the first five years. And that is because usually by the time someone finds out about it, it's so already in late stage that there's no hope for that family. We invite you to join us. We're going to be celebrating on November fifteenth a pancreatic cancer awareness rally. It's going to be held at First United Methodist Church. We are just now following the details, or otherwise I would have given you something today. It will be posted on this website, and it will be hopefully in the papers. So we do ask if you would support us and come to the rally. If you would wear purple in November, because purple, yes, I have tutus that I can bring to the rally, and I will get some of you to wear those. Just ask some of your previous commissioners. Also, just help us increase awareness tonight by passing this resolution. And we do thank you for your consideration.
I'll begin the motion to approve.
So will I.
Motion end of second, Mr. Beers. Question, I hate, end of discussion.
And there are folks in our community now, as Chris will tell you, that are fighting for pancreatic cancer, which sit here tonight. I have a very DM outlook. If anything can happen, Chris, we know there's, I know of two folks who are not immune right now and have been diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. And I guess names of surgery they did.
The Whipple surgery, which Diane had.
Yeah, and we just went through that, and you just can't make up for how serious that is. This man may not have had a lot of cancer, but it's a very good thing. You put on a purple suit, you're going to do it to anybody.
And we do appreciate your support.
End of discussion. Not all the favoritists say aye. Aye or no? Motion passes, Mr. Deckers.
No, it was Diane.
Mr. Deckers gave you two copies, and one that you put back in our minutes, and I was asked to present you with one of these. And for the record, I have to say her name, this is Teresa Ramsey. That's my pleasure. So we'll hand this to you on behalf of the board. And that's your number four.
We appreciate, we appreciate your support. Thank you so much.
I don't care.
More info will be on our website.
Thank you, Teresa. Let's see, Commissioner Hayward is E. That would be Duke Appalachian Trail. Trying to get yourself to these.
I want to do a real quick, I want to do a real quick walkthrough of some things.
Thank you, Ron.
About the Appalachian Trail, it's my opinion of it. Everybody hear me okay? I've handed out each one of our commissioners here and the chairman. Let me see that just a minute. One of the most used Appalachian Trail guidebooks that there ever was. This started back by a fellow by the name of Dan Bruce, who started hiking the Appalachian Trail and keeping data, and wound up hiking the trail eight years. The ATC is out of Harpers Ferry, West Virginia, and I've been receiving some emails. Ms. Wallace, I think you're on that board downtown, right? I've been receiving some emails, and I was thinking that we were going to have one of the representatives come up here and say something about it, because I got an email about it wanting some support of what they're doing here in town. And basically, people who hike that trail, it's 2,175 miles long, and it takes about five to six months to hike. People come out here on this trail to get away from life, to get away from regulations, to get away from aggravations. And one of them goes by a trail name. They're not Bill and Tom and George. They're grasshoppers, they trail, tree climber, what have you. So many of them, you hear, go with the name of solitude, or solone, or solace, or alone, just because they want to get out here and just get away from things. In 1972, I believe it was, I went through the Forest Service back when the Appalachian Trail was not known about too much about local people. And the job I had was to carry a backpack with some food in it, and some tools, including a little home light chainsaw about like this, and keep that trail cut back with overgrunge. Well, it basically seems to be that the Appalachian Trail has tried to get a, I mean, the Appalachian Trail Services has tried to get a toehole for gears, regulations, and you're probably not going to like what all I've got to say. I believe that things sometimes are better left alone. So several years ago, I had a band horn come talk to me about the Appalachian Trail on Main Franklin, the gateway to the Appalachian Trail, and we were the first one. And so in the explanations that I understood, this was going to be something that had to bring business into our towns. Friends for thirty years or more, I have worked with hikers bringing people into town. I probably have brought more than 100,000 people to Main County free of charge. And so, real quickly, actually, I've become a gateway community. We were required of three things to do. Number one is have some kind of a celebration, which is any of you ever heard of the April Hiker Food Bash? I started that back in 2004, and I told them, I said, well, you know, if you need that, let's do it. Look at page nineteen, if you want to see our advertisements, or anybody else, I'll send it. Next thing was, we were supposed to, let's see, it was to have some kind of knowledge that they shared with people, what the trail was about, and I think the trail flash was introduced, and there was, what was it, one more? Anyway, first thing to know, and what I'm seeing is coming about here, they've got a board here in town that started to click regulations. And thirty years I put in out here trying to bring people to Main County as tourists. And if you would like to check at this and see, it's one of our top tourist attractions now, is the Appalachian Trail. Well, I don't think regulations is what these people are looking for going up and down the trail. And somebody says, or one of them sent me an email and asked me if I would go along with it. And I didn't say nothing, I didn't mention. I just, in my mind, I think that these people have been coming through here for years. They know how to keep here. And I think that I got one that said that they were trying to start a website to tell people where to stay to the services they could get. And this is the number one guidebook that's always been there. Now, if you're going to take off today, I guess you use GPS in Houston, if you used a random alley road at, you didn't go there to somewhere else. The ATC has got a website, in my opinion, all right, from everybody that hikers hardly ever look at. Now, you hear exactly, they hardly ever look at. And the reason is, every page I was wanting money. Want donations for this and donations for that. I don't think that in this book right here that it asks for any money. So they're downtown now saying that they want the commissioners to support their board down there. Anybody know who the name of the slogan is? Name of the slogan of the town? I think we counted eighteen through hikers that come to the last event they have down here on Main Street. Yet thousands of dollars was put into tourism. I tried to help the town by bringing one of the biggest speakers that ever spoke. His name is Warren Doyle, well-known for hiking. And when he left, he said, I won't be back again. Gene Eskey is the oldest man living that hiked the trail in 1951. Now, Earl Shaffer hiked it the first time in 1949, but I brought Gene Eskey here twice. And he's an icon on that trail. People want to sing with tears from him, they want pictures from him. And I just feel like that this guidebook right here is what the people need. Whatever they're doing downtown, it didn't work for the name of the slogan before. I don't tell these hikers what to do. I go for a free charge, I give them a ride into town. Most of them stay all night here. I took them to Rotary, if any of you stand there. Was you there in the morning, and I took people up there and held up receipts where they spent over $1,800 here. One of them did, and $900 and $700.
We thanked them all for giving them money.
Yeah. Okay. This is what's happening. This is the kind of money that's coming in here. And all I hope that those folks are doing, and I was really wishing that one of them come up here. The only reason I'm bringing them up tonight, this might be my last time sitting up here. I don't know, I'll come up here and say goodbye if I'm voted out. If I'm voted in, I'll leave another four years ago. They never have come up, that's why I'm bringing it up again tonight, bringing this. But the information, I mean, I could throw in some things like this, as ATC working for people. Let's go back in the history books. Franklin D. Roosevelt, Vice President of Rockville, get $5 million from that room and be put to the smoking, or any of you's aware of that. Okay, there's one stipulation that they had, that there would never be a charge into that park, that every other national park you go into is charged for it, correctly. But guess what? If you're a hiker now, three years ago, they just put a tax on you, and when you go across that Fontana Town, if you've not got a permit to go in there, it costs you $20, it's a $500 fine. Now, what's the ATC doing for these people? I think they told, trying to get us, once we come around, if we'd sell this for $500, up to $2,500 to all the hiker businesses around town, would we sell them a subscription to? Well, that's going to take care of things with two days. They just give a sticker, go and go. I've stopped giving these stickers like ten years, showing people we're hiker friends. I just feel like that there's a lot of gears that's been put into promoting hiker tourism in our towns to jeopardize. Right here on this board, just going to beg, let people know how hiker fans want to do. If they don't come in here and pay more attention, just exactly like they did that late teen people coming to that last trail convention we had in town. So friends, for what it's worth, this is what I mentioned two years, about two months or so ago. We've got one of these books, if you don't find anything else, it's like, they call me Ty Bob Haven, Mr. Price, it was 1695, a print sold back. I sell them books right there, so, of course, if you can't sell something like that. But anyway.
Repeat that.
No, I want you to keep them as a souvenir. But if you look in these books, it tells you we're both fire... But if you look in these books, it tells you where both our outpills and sand, it tells the motels and the discount rates, the hikers, it tells about the hiker base, the road form, it tells about a flea drive. And I think the sound is sort of, because I won't go along with Tyson after talking with him, trying to give him a ride, because they're on the mountain with her, but I mean, that's, I can tell her, I just need to get her back, go on the ride with her, ride police, all that. But I feel like that we need to let hikers go in and go themselves and go, go remember me, start telling 44 a month to do.
Thank you. This is all good information.
It's got all the trail maps in all the way to Georgia's main. That's where all the services is. And I noticed in the newspaper there too, that something said today about the, they were that young men in school in town could give all of that information to the town. But I've been giving this information to them for a long time, trying to help them. So I know they've both got the information to teach me, so I give it to them too. So I'm trying to make them enjoy their town until it passes through.
All right. Thank you, Ron.
Appreciate yous taking the time to answer that.
Whole business, Mr. Chairman, we have not had a position for whole business. That's the bill rates, that's both. New business, consideration for workers, discuss marketing operations, that park management is very complex, the county manager has that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Seth's here to get at you. Basically, what we got is, you know, as we've been working diligently on the construction phase of the Parker Meadows project. And we realize and we start seeing everything come together, and if you haven't been out there, I would encourage you to go take a look, as I always do, but it is really starting to take shape now. And I'm sure after this last rain, that that grass will be, you can probably hear it growing out there if it gets warm again, but that project is coming along. Our grading, we expect no more than about two weeks weather cooperating, and we should be finished with the grading at the park. We have an estimated start date for building construction of November 1st. And as of right now, and tonight, when we award the building contract for Parker Meadows, at this time, that will be the fifth contract that this board has awarded, and that is all of our big ticket items, our grating, our lights, our fencing, and with the building construction, all of those items have been awarded after this meeting. And at this time, using our projected numbers and looking at the overall budget, we're going to be about 21,000 or the good on that project right now. So I would like to report that the project is on budget at this time, and it's moving forward great. It's really making some good progress.
And we're about the timeline we discussed.
Yes, and barring the weather and the winter months and what goes on there, you know, we can't tell at this time, but of course, but we will continue to work diligently and with all, if any, if anybody in the county or anybody we've contracted with that's been working on this project has anything to do with it, we'll, we'll be kicking the door down out there in springtime. So, and as we, as we move through the construction, it is important, and I've talked with Seth and Mr. Chairman, you and I have talked about, we need to start looking toward the future and making Parker Meadows part of the overall recreation infrastructure in Macon County. And I know we had discussed in the beginnings of this project about how that Parker Meadows would offer us economic development opportunities. It would lead us to travel ball tournaments and things of that nature. There is a strong draw all over the region, the southeast in the country, travel ball tournaments, and it's a big ticket item out there. And we need to look at not only Parker Meadows Recreation Park isolated, but how it fits into our overall infrastructure with the fields at the Robert C. Parker Building and our rec park. We have, we'll have more than eight field stock, or I think Seth and I were talking the other day, something like 15 fields. And we need to, we need to define this product that we're going to be advertising to these travel ball tournaments and the promoter. And we need to think about how we're going to market that product. And most importantly, we need to, we need to think about the, how that, we're going to marry that with the leagues that we're operating here locally, our local Little Leagues, our local softball. Because, you know, at the end of the day, we need, we realize that we need to take care of those people first and make sure that, that our kids and our children have a nice and appropriate place to play. And so there's a scheduling that needs to be looked at there. And the point I'm making is, there's a whole host of issues that when the park gets finished, that we're going to need to be, we're already going to need to have a plan and something laid out there so we can jump right into it. So with that, I'm proposing that the board appoint some members from the community to a work group that will discuss these things, the scheduling. We'll talk about who do we need to contact, you know, what exactly are we trying to sell to these promoters and travel ball teams that will be coming into the area? Again, how does that fit in with Little League? When can we have the tournament? And again, most importantly, how can we make sure that, that our leagues and the leagues that we have going here are able to continue to play and enjoy that as well? So in doing that, I've looked around and thought and spoken with Seth about some, some members from the community that are heavily involved in our local leagues as well as travel ball teams. And they're, they're the ones out there in, in respect to the local leagues, that are involved with the Little League and Little League Baseball, Little League Softball. They know the needs of these leagues and the scheduling, they're very familiar with that, and kind of know what we need to expect locally. While also, there's other people out there that are heavily involved with travel ball. They go to these tournaments, they see what they like of these fields, they see what they don't like, they see what works, they see what doesn't work. And if we could get that discussion started with having these two groups of people in the room, as well as representatives from our local recreation park staff and economic development and our recreation commission present as well, then I think we could really get some healthy dialogue started and get some good ideas generated that would be ready to be put in place for when Parker Meadows Recreation Park opens, and that would get us that much more ahead of the game. So with that, I'm proposing that the board would appoint to this work group that will basically come back before the board with their recommendations as they discuss them, as well as present it to the recreation commission at that time to endorse these recommendations and use them for a tool for planning purposes as we see fit as we begin discussing the future of not only the Parker Meadows Recreation Park, but our recreation product here in Macon County. And the members that, that I would propose are Tommy Jenkins, Billy Van Hook, Todd Ensley, Autumn Corbin, Justin Moffett, Byron McClure, Gloria Thun, and Jerry Moore. And again, Seth and I will be at the meetings, or Seth will be at the meetings, and, you know, this, this can be, the community's been very supportive of this project, members of the community, and, you know, it's, it's good to hear what they have to say. And the people that are actually involved out there with boots on the ground, both locally and at these travel tournaments, I think they can bring some really valuable perspective and insight to this project in terms of how we proceed with it.
Can I take this? I'm sure you can.
This will be the nature of the advisory board?
Yes, yes, it will be an advisory board.
Let's be clear, just full disclosure here, I talked, I'm playing off the rec commission. We began talking about, we will finish this thing before long, let's, let's talk about some usage. And we were talking about grating and how to start that usage, that's where the idea came from. And I actually went to the recreation commission, and they approved this idea unanimously. I don't know what's going around them, this was to ask a very specific group of people for information. And you notice, his language, I think, might be, note that in a minute, it's a support group, not, not a form of supervisory meeting, because, you know, we have to take applications, that whole process. And this, the management would not be a permanent group, I would think, I think.
It could be, I just think, yeah, if it becomes a permanent group, then I think these, you see applications for that process, but these are folks that, and I wasn't involved in the choosing of people, I think these two guys sort of handpicked people who've been involved in this type of thing in our county. And so I would prefer with their recommendation.
And basically, what they're wanting to do is, is to bring ideas to the rec commission. Everything will go through the rec commission before it comes before y'all, or to, to be actually, we act on, on those recommendations.
And it's just, it's involving, how many ever you got there, Mr. Commander?
Yes, sir, there'll be eight. There's one, two, three, four, five. There's eight on there.
So it just involves a greater part of our community, Indians, rather than us making decisions or even the rec commission doing it. We're asking people who've been involved in, and involved in these tournaments.
Well, we're talking about bells and whistles here. You know, on making a good tournament, a great tournament. They'll have ideas on what they've really liked, you know, at various places, and what they didn't like. So that'll, that'll enable us to avoid some of those negatives and accentuate the positives. So I think it's a great idea. And so did the rec commission, they, they will support having another group kind of work under them to, to give them ideas and we come before y'all.
And I talked to Derek and Seth about this. They can vote, go out and seek advice for whoever they want to, without, they don't need our approval before that. But I think what they're asking for is for us to approve this as a, as a work group that they can, they can focus for a specific period of time or purpose, rather than just going to those individuals, one-on-one or two-on-two, to afford this group to be together for some period of time. I think that's the reason we have this. Wait. Yes, sir. I hope you have any?
A motion to approve.
One, and make one.
Christian Hay, make the motion.
Second.
All, any discussion? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Owe. That motion passes. So from your perspective, if you're hoping to go out there and see.
It's all great. And, and like, like Commander said, if you've not been out there in a while, grass is growing like crazy. And it's really starting to take shape.
And let me, let me say this, I don't get specifics, I don't have the specific numbers, but I think we all understand the situation right now with the gravesite out there. Costs money to redo that. I would, me and the county manager and Seth, and that group that's working there, they've made several changes in the, in the tiers of the field, get back on the neighbors, some harassing in, I don't know the term used, retaining walls, and like that, and it cuts money from part of the budget. And so with that, in addition to that, we're still in hopes that the Cherokee Revival Society will possibly fund some funds to help preserve that gravesite. The last indication I had was that we're strongly considering that still on the table.
Possibly, yes.
I think it looks good, I mean.
I, it.
And it has?
It has, it has. It's, it has some character.
What I'm talking about is you've got four fields here, and what they did is drop the level, these two, six feet, something like that.
Yeah.
Which required less.
On the large fields, it's six feet, on the small field, it's about three and a half.
So they were able to save some money there and make up the difference. And as Mr. Commander said, we're on time and on budget, which is great.
Good point, definitely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Moving right along, adoption will be 2015 holiday schedule.
Which is not their contract, I bet.
Is it?
No, that's me, we left that right in the middle, I agree. I think too much sense, but I'll.
Oh, well, okay.
You seal that adoption holiday right there.
Do you want to put it all together?
You want to take five seconds?
Yeah. Standard procedure here, gentlemen, 2015 holiday schedule, we again follow the state Office of Human Resources on this, we align with them each year, we've done so in the past, and this year, the cops of DS, as you're getting, will do an approval from their state officials to get this in place to the planning.
I'll make a motion. Change everything. Motion to take, or?
Motion to take, second.
Have any discussion? Here and then all the papers say aye. Owe. That motion passes now, Derek.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number C is going to be, and basically, I spoke with Tom before the meeting, we do not have a finished final copy of the contract for Warf, for the building at Parker Meadows Recreation Center. We do have a draft contract, and that draft contract has been reviewed by our county attorney, and he has made changes to that contract that he deems sufficient to get done what we need to get done with Mr. Warf as we authorize him to move forward with the building construction at Parker Meadows. So in light of that, I would like to request that the board authorize me at such time that we do get a final draft of that contract back, a final copy, authorize me to enter into that contract with Warf Construction for $499,500.
That, that will need the creative order too.
Yes.
Tom, I talked about that, I told you, Glory, I thought, why didn't you say it?
Yes. So that, that's the first. Just to let you know, that contract was intended to be in my hands prior to this meeting, but I'm guessing as a contractor, it wasn't to make something that flooded or where, for some, some reason, they get to actually produce and they're printing out the final copy. Exactly the same, this is corrected, it's the same thing, it just isn't, this is still a contract that literally says draft.
Mr. Bender had prepared or had sent to me a draft, and I have, I had three or four changes that need to be made to it, installed to it, that it was made, and sent to me. So can we approve this, continue on, you and county manager reviewing?
It's confirming that it's what we've been looking at. I think it is set up to the county manager's base too, so it is a part of the specific rule.
Motion to approve the contract from the satisfaction of county attorney, give authorized to the county manager to.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion on the motion? Here and then all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Owe. That motion passes, thanks, sir. D is a change order?
Yes, sir. The second thing I'm, I'm going to request is for the board to authorize me to approve a change order to that contract of $499,500 that you just approved. This change order is going to be a deed up of $60,000, making that Warf contract amount now $439,500. Where this deed up comes from is due to the location of the gravesite at the adult fields, we had to recess, we had to, as, as you guys have mentioned, we had to drop those fields. And in doing that, it created the need for 240 feet of retaining wall on each field, or 240 feet total of retaining wall, along with two concrete dugouts, which if you can picture it, that dugout will be basically serving as a retaining wall as well. So at the Little League, at the Little League fields, again, we had another 240 feet of retaining wall and concrete dugouts as we again compensated for archaeological areas and dropped those fields lower than we had originally planned. So basically, from Warf's contract, that $60,000 deed up is the credit he gave us for removing eight dugouts and all the viewing areas that were originally put with the dugouts from his contract. We got credited $60,000. We are currently in negotiations with concrete, people that, for concrete, to do this work with the retaining walls and the dugouts that needed to be pulled. And those negotiations will not yet finalize yet, but we will be working to in the very near future. So that change order, that is essentially what that does. It's a $60,000 credit, but we will be farming out two. we will be farming out two concrete masonry workers, this, the dugouts and the 240 feet worth of retaining wall at each of the little.
That would likewise be the, the, we need to feel like the, the.
To approve the deduction, we're training with operational, our last County Manager to see.
With motion and a second, any order, any discussion? All the papers say aye? Aye, opposed? That motion passes, and Derek, any's the brother.
Yes, sir, lastly, what we have here is from Hidden Brothers Well Drilling, it is a proposal for the drilling of the well at Parker Meadows, I'd like to report that received email correspondence from Mr. Lackey, our engineer today, and notified me that the Hidden Brothers were, was the low bidder and is E-Verifice compliant, so that meets all of the bidding statutes and out, and kind of covers all the legalities surrounding that particular contract, according to Mr. Lackey. We estimate right now that the well, that will need to be drilled out there, it was originally estimated it would take 300 feet, but we're going to go ahead and assume that that will be 400 feet, just to be on the safe side, at $10 a foot for drilling, that'll be $4,000, and the PVC well casing is $6 per foot, the steel well casing is $12 per foot, so we're gonna assume that we need 120 foot of steel casing at $12 per foot, and Mike, just to make from that, I just see that I thought that 12 was a 10, and I dip the math wrong. At 1440, making that $5,440, and why I'm giving you these prices is that in this contract that was proposed to us from Hidden Brothers Well Drilling, they put just the price per foot, and if, if discussing this with our legal counsel, we wanted to be able to have a not-to-exceed amount on that contract, instead of just having an open-ended price per foot, so we, we will suggest that Hidden Brothers go back and include in this contract a not-to-exceed amount of 5,400, or $5,440, which again, the worst-case scenario, 400 feet and 120 foot steel casing, so that can be give or take a little bit, but we just don't want to go over that amount.
Advantage two, the order, another 100 feet, if you hit it, a bit of water supply at 300 feet, which is likely, then that's gonna give you a hundred more feet of red for, you've got to remember this is a use of water in fields, and this kind of, reduce the value of that, so even if you hit it 300.
Yes, sir. And so, what I would be requesting is upon the changes to the contract as suggested by legal counsel, following those changes, to authorize me to enter into a contract with Hidden Brothers Well Drilling for an amount not to exceed $5,440.
That would like a change order, and also we need a free office to give this all this. Take care of this. I would even have a motion to approve the well, the recreation, so they've got a motion from the second, I take, any discussion?
Yes, and that, that was one of the, that was one thing, too, that this contract is specifically for the drilling and casing. There, we do have estimates on pump and things to go with that, but just for this particular service, just for the drilling and casing, is all this particular contract, there was no pump mentioned in there, so that was why it was on.
Any discussion?
If you're done, all the papers, the question say aye?
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes. We have the consent agenda, which contains mint, protection, nature, budget, 49, 57, attached places, not paid for in action. Any more people who want to have a move from that? If so, we speak now, or a motion to approve that, I would like to, second, a motion and a second, any discussion? All the papers say aye? Aye. Opposed? That motion passes. We have appointments, Matt and Parkman Review Officers, Ward, Franklin, not Franklin, EJ. And, Steve, any questions from Richard Liker, Steve Holm, and Wes Hall, may be appointed to review officers, Matt and Parkman, and Justice Secretary, is that correct?
Motion to approve the Minister Richard Liker's question.
Motion and second, any discussion? Top others attached, Jim Ruttner, Dr. Carol Peterson, who we recommended to fill up Burger Slot, also Emily Porter Bowers, the nurse currently fills the meat slot for Ward, or Bryce Sheila Price, that Price held that position for a while, these recommendations are probably more helpful, and Christian Heavens, our liaison, are you okay with that?
Motion to approve, that motion, second.
With motion and a second, any discussion?
I think Mr. Heavens will probably agree that we wish the Burger family advanced the fashion, he's, you just should, Richard Randy talked about that, so that's why we think to the Burger family, he's got a long battle in front of him.
So wouldn't I replace somebody from this power, she's changing positions there?
There'd be a vacant, vacant spot.
All right, gentlemen, any discussion? All the papers say aye? Aye. Opposed? That motion passes, Town of Franklin, EJ, representative of Town of Franklin, requested Janet Green, he reappointed she was serving on that position for some time, representing the Town of Franklin, Franklin Plan Board, and.
Motion to approve.
Motion and second, all the papers, any discussion? All the papers say aye?
The only other one on there that's not listed, the I can bring to the board, is for the Heritage Center and Cali School, Bo Brian had submitted her paperwork, two licenses on that board, the board has some. Some very important votes coming up, O'Brien is very involved with the Heritage Center, so I would ask that the board approve O'Brien, beginning her three-year term effective to be there.
Any more motions, three seconds. Second, discussion.
The live, big bluegrass band of the year will be at Cali Saturday night, so these folks, you see they were, we just had the end of the year off rain, these folks were out in the sun, so not seeing them, they already get a city, you'd be packed out, so it'd be a good show.
Okay, any further agreement? All the papers say aye? Aye. Passing, do we need a close session? We will. Briefly, I do anticipate some action, okay, that we'll have to take.
All right, open session.
Mr. Attorney, I want to take some, like, the reputation, I have this board, that is, at this time, all of you realize we're a real collection, and three of our officials are a collection, and we've got some quality people running, there's just some information, I'm saying this is not as candid, I'm not running, but I guess as a defender of this five-year board, there's some information floating out there, and some radio ads that I heard the last couple days, it was a brand, said well, that there were 40% tax increase planned for next August, and I think I need to say, as chairman of the board, that that's simply not true, we haven't even started the budget process, we're in the process of revaluation, which has not been completed, and we're barely into this budget, much less deciding what the tax rate will be, and I will say this on behalf of all five of us, and maybe we don't, we're part of this, let me know, we all agree, hearing your talks about revaluation, that we came down to set that rate, that we would set a revenue due to tax rate or less, so we do not want in any way this to be a, a cross-border tax increase for folks, so, so not to mention candid, we just want to pick your head, we mention it extremely misleading, extremely inaccurate, and did not represent the desires and direction of this board. Yeah, and yeah, I think everybody agrees with me.
I hadn't heard of it, all politically accurate.
Understood, but that one was really misleading the intentions of the city board, and I think that should be approached, so. Anyway, that's it, we did motion, so moving. That's the board's purpose, deserve to the attorney.
Exactly, I was making sure that seven, 41.
Christian Hayes, do you say that motion? All the papers? Aye. We'll, we'll be locked, that's what, unfortunately. We recognize Mr. Chris Solid, Chris is a solid waste director, and he has some information to bring to the board.
I'll actually have, I guess, several actions, and I'll try to keep them in the proper, proper order. A brief background on what we're, what I'm about to ask the gentleman, as you know, we've been in discussions, heated at times, but discussions over the last couple of years about the future of Solid Waste operations in Lake County, and the pending reaching of capacity of our current landfill. A little over, probably two and a half years ago, we started looking at Lake County's options for how would we manage waste going forward, of course, we have an additional sale permitted and cited at our current location, and so one option was to stay in the landfill business and continue as, as planned, the second option would be to exit the landfill business and look to a regional landfill and basically hauling our county out, or hauling our waste out of it. When we got into this process fairly early, in the process, a third option came to light, which was to expand the landfill, footprint of landfill by about 35%, going on to some adjoining properties, and so in terms of that option, we evaluated, I had our consultants evaluated, and it turned out that a 35% increase in footprint would yield a 300% return in volume and airspace in an expanded.
Say that again, the 35%?
If we increase the footprint, the area, in two planes, if we increase that footprint 35%, we increase the effective volume of the landfill by 300%. I presented to you guys, I believe, last November, a table of estimates that I had done, that showed kind of what the dollar, the price tag of each of those options might be. More recently, I have had our consultants run an analysis of all three options, and I have, more or less individually in talking to you guys, I have disseminated that information to you, and the bottom line is that while these are estimates and not written in stone, the ratios between the numbers I have to have a great deal of confidence in, and our best option was to seek to contain two adjoining properties and move forward with an expanded landfill. Without going all the way through those documents and the new information, you already know, the difference to the county over the life of the facility versus if we didn't, if we stopped landfilling and went out of county, was in the neighborhood of $36 million savings to the county over the life of the landfill. That's a pretty big ticket, that's a lot of potential savings down the road for people making accounting, and I feel like that is the way that we should go. There are some additional benefits that I think, well, 36 million is pretty impressive, so.
And you say, so by this property, we'll save the county 36 million, or how long?
Well, we have, we have two estimates of time, one is based on our historic compaction rate of approximately 1,180 pounds per cubic yard, with the volume of airspace that the expanded landfill would generate, it's anticipated that that landfill would last 43 years. However, since we've made some changes to our operation over the last several years, and are doing a better job running the landfill and a more efficient job running the landfill, we've been able to experience compaction rates in excess of 1,400,000 to 1,500,000 cubic yard. When I ran those numbers, all the same numbers, and just changed the compaction rate to 1,400, which I felt like was conservative, the life expectancy of the landfill became 60 years.
So 60 years, if we could go back and just say, just develop, just develop the land you got now, is there more plan?
Okay.
Is what, how long's left to last?
Under the estimate provided by our current, our historic capacity rate, that landfill would last 16 years. At the increased capacity of 1,400, I'm sorry, not increased capacity, at the increased compaction rate of 1,400 pounds, that becomes 19.7.
So the difference is 19.7, using current footprint, expanded footprint, the issue to the property you recommended would run down to 60?
60 years.
60.
Yes, sir.
Another thing, Christian, I want to explain to you, so make sure you understand that, if you went ahead and just developed this, what we have now, and come back later and purchase this property later, then it would almost be impossible to incorporate that into the.
Absolutely, if you, if you wouldn't mind, it might be easiest to demonstrate on this area.
You see, with you and me, that's all about.
So our current landfill is kind of narrow, it kind of does.
Sorry? That's the best, my, my next look here, boy.
So the carmated landfill kind of runs through here, and then wraps around towards the county road, and that's set by boundary buffers from residences, from roads, from the body of water, it pretty runs over here, but it's kind of, it's kind of a narrow little turning strip, so by acquiring these two pieces of property, which, trust me, they're two pieces of property here, we can basically take this little narrow swag and square it off, and then by the properties of geometry, we realize a fairly significant return on a bulk of air. So, what was your question? Because I didn't answer your question.
No, my, I was just going to tell me that, I think, you had told us one time, if you didn't have this property, you could explain.
Thank you for bringing me back. So, obviously, the landfill, like the design, turns this way across this property to line up here, so if you, if you see the landfill, or without going into a big deal about how landfills are built, once we, once we build this line here, there'll be compacted clay that gets compacted over six inches, and it can't settle an inch, there'll be a liner, liner system, a leach inflation system, all the things that go into building a landfill, and there'll And there'll be a die that's constructed to contain the waste. Once that die goes in and that liner goes in and there's waste on top of it, that line can't be moved. So if we put, and we're talking about a fairly small area to get that return, it basically runs kind of right here. So if we were to put a berm, making three dimensions, a berm here, and then turn around and build another one here, we basically should have all property. So once, where we not divide the properties now and begin construction of the smaller existing landfill, once this line goes in, it's, it's over. There is no, there is no getting back. There would be no potential, there wouldn't be enough airspace left on that property to even try to build it.
What's your opinion, we're about to ask you that?
Our latest, our latest capacity analysis, state regulations, we have to do a capacity analysis every year. Our latest capacity analysis gives us twenty-five months of our land remaining alive in our current landfill.
About two years.
About two years.
The works of the court that we've gotten to be started, man.
Well, in all honesty, thanks to Senate Bill fourteen ninety-two, which I refer to wrongly here. When we do this expansion, our permitted landfill will become a new landfill. To permit a new landfill in the state probably takes three or four years. We've got two years to get it done. To that end, unless you have more questions.
You got a question, gentlemen?
Who makes an issue of this issue when they go out of enterprise?
Oh, thank you, yes, I definitely should have mentioned that. Yes, of course, Solid Waste Department is run as an enterprise fund, which is almost like a separate business within the county. We're obviously part of the county, but we do not use adware and tax revenues to fund our operations anyway. We operate on the monies that we generate through hidden fees, availability fees, sell recyclables, grants, et cetera.
So how much, how much adware and tax money we're going to purchase?
No, no.
Zero.
Zero. We will actually be doing a transfer from our retained assets account into a capital account to make these purchases. Money exists that will have to be moved, which will be one of the actions upcoming. But the money's basically in the bank in the enterprise.
Chris, I have to ask you this privately, and I feel like I need to ask you this publicly. An enterprise fund, just to claim it's like a, it's run like a business, there's no adware and tax money. We don't put money into a budget. We can basically provide it to a service and get surrender from that to operate the service. So let's, let's take, let's say that this is not, the county does know this, let's say this is Chris Stoll's landfill, Big Science's Chris Stoll's landfill, and that's your enterprise fund, and you're operating it, but fish what you can. Would you buy these two pieces of property to add to footprint and water?
The first answer is yes, absolutely. In, in any type of, you know, any type of construction project, you know, you're, well, not even construction, any type of business, you know, you want to spend your money wisely. But when you have a chance to spend X number of dollars and see a return on that investment, you know, of a hundredfold, that's, that's just, that's something you'd do every time. And, and without question, if this were a, if I were the owner of a private company in a landfill business and I had this opportunity, absolutely, I would, I would purchase these properties to do this expansion.
So we got savings of thirty-six million dollars over the last ten days.
Yes.
That's two-thirds of your budget, because you're working with net. They're with the enterprise fund.
Any more questions, gentlemen?
Any more questions for clarification? Motion approved.
Well, I think the first motion I need to make is will the commissioners to approve a budget amendment?
It would be two transactions, two different transactions, two different owners, and there would be a budget amendment in connection with each of those proposed contracts. And you might want to mention the Superfect contract to do each contract for extended due diligence period for the county to make the records and test and to check things out, make sure that this property, this is a property that we want to leave.
Would you like me to delve into that a little bit, or get it?
I will say this is that myself, at work with the deal, consulting in the past, and they basically had laid out the types of things that I actually know this process, and those things that they are part and parcel of, as well as some things that I can say.
In short, if we can't know within six months if this is a doable project, then first this property will realize us this increasing capacity, we will back out.
So who's first to chicken the egg?
I don't think you should authorize a contract if you don't have a budget. I guess that's the egg.
I would first be looking for a, an action of the board to approve the transfer of one point five three billion dollars from retained assets in enterprise fund into a capital, capital outlet expenditure, capital expenditure line item in the solid waste section.
Okay.
Motion to that effect.
Motion by Chris, I hear you. Go to second by Chris, take, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. That motion passes. Now we need to...
Now I would like to request the board to take action to approve the contract for sale and purchase of property. Which one I have first?
Give me a little bit of credit.
Start with this one first.
We do both at once?
No, I think we really need to do them separately.
I would like to request the board take action to agree with a contract for sale and purchase of real property between the county and Charles T. Dalton and my Winnie L. Dalton for an eight-point-four acre tract adjacent to Lake County MSW landfill in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars.
If you have any questions, we have to move.
As liaison to the solid waste department, it's, let me preface, my recommendation is that we've worked on this thing too long. We've waited too late as a board. We're going to be crushed for time, and we all realize that we have to take action to ensure that the next generation has a place to dispose of waste. And none of us are happy with what we are about to enter into. It's just the fact that this is what we have to do. We have to provide a safe place to dispose of solid waste. Based upon that, I make an recommendation that we enter into a purchase agreement that described by Chris Stoll.
Motion by Chris, I hear you. Second.
I was going to reflect what you just said, but I'm going to make that second due to how long we got to. But I'm looking down the road and seeing that figure on the recommendation of Mr. Stoll to us saving the county thirty-six million dollars.
Do you think we need the approval of the contract that he presented? We have motion in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. That vote is unanimous. Now the second lease property.
Yes, sir.
Well, let's, let's stay right there on that one for a moment. One of the terms of that agreement calls for the sellers to have basically a one-year lease for a portion of that property from the time of closing. I was hoping with Mr. Stoll, that is not a problem to him on his, his end. It also includes what we call a license, which is like a accessory right to some of the property, but a right to use the property so long as it doesn't interfere with what Chris is doing out there in his project. Basically, this is for a one-year period. The county, I had prepared a proposed resolution for that agreement, approving that agreement, and I would ask Chris to approve that. That's part and parcel of the agreement that you just gave.
That's approved in agreement. This is the resolution regarding this.
Gentlemen, we have the recommendation of the resolution from Lake County to have property surplus and give you a one-year lease by the same to Charles T. Dalton and my Winnie. Go to motion in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. That motion passes. Now, is that your question?
Yes, this would be my recommendation that the board take action to enter into a great purchase and sale of real property with Mr. Donald Burling and Fay Fortune of Florida for a property adjoining MSW landfill in some seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
And note, Chris, that, that is a property, and there's all showing home.
Yes, sir.
Located on that, on that property.
And the home would, the home would most likely remain, although the home may be used.
We go purposes for administration.
As long as it remains a piece of the solid waste facility, there is no, there are, there are no love requirements. There are, there are some requirements for it being there, but those, I mean.
It doesn't interfere with what you're doing.
Yes. And again, I didn't say it with the last one, I feel like I should say, it's in here, but this purchase being conditional upon favorable results of the due diligence period.
It likewise contains that roughly a six-month period of due diligence. Same type of thing, same terms of the deal, same section.
You had this as a great purchase and sale of real property.
That's with the Burlings.
With the Burlings.
Can you spell that?
Did you give the price?
Seven hundred and thirty thousand.
B U R L I N G, Don, and actually Fay is his wife, but her last name is Fortune.
Fay Fortune.
Fay Fortune.
All right, gentlemen, questions, gentlemen? I'm going to make a motion to approve the agreement.
I thank as much as all of us here, really, given this situation where all of us, you know, we don't have a choice, I'll make this motion. And, gentlemen, I'd be glad to second that motion, and with this caveat that years ago, another board faced this same dilemma, when they started making Lake County landfill work locally at the time. And without those commissioners, we willing to, to step out. I don't know where the county would be today concerning the solid waste, so, so we, if I hadn't said it wrong, wrong, but say thirty-six million, we probably won't be here to realize that the decades to come, the citizens of this county do it, so I think that's, that's a speech reference for the board.
Good motion in second, any discussion?
First, I want to thank Chris for his diligence in educating this board and helping us through this. Again, we've sprung it out just about as long as we can. It's going to put pressure on you, make your dead marriage, but we do appreciate, I think, appreciate what you do with the, at the solid waste department, and for guiding us through this, the hardest process.
Well said, Mr. Hagan. I would echo that, and just to point out that we have been working this for two years. This is not, something that came up yesterday and been approved today. It's, I've got a two-year process, it's been a learning process. As Mr. Hagan said, I would echo that, that I vote for this, what could it save is a thirty-six million dollars over life of that project, and that's a word either.
I'd say this right here, station, because we used to, we didn't just promote this to that, we had explored our options, and we figured out what we could do, because you create a lot of price protection.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. That motion passes unanimously.
I do have another action.
What's that?
Before I do it, I want to personally thank you, gentlemen. I know this has been just one hell of a process. I know, I know the feelings, I know the justification, I understand, I appreciate your trust in me, your trust in my staff to run this department and bring this project about, and I just want to thank you for showing your support. And for Chris Stoll, the guy, this is horrible, this is the worst thing you could ever done to me. But Chris is all county employee, I definitely thank you, this is, this is what I've been up at the county for a long, long time. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chris. Chris.
Relax. Is that a question that you want to pay there?
No, sir.
Chris, I suppose we'd like to thank you very much. We put a lot of faith in you to take care of this project. As I say, the saving, the sellers will save a lot of money, and you get a lot of year of service out there, so six years, a day, a notice, permission to build, say, we probably, I'll be on the other side of the grass, but then at least have somebody looking back and say that we tried to do what the best we could.
Thanks, sir.
Do you have a fraction to approve this change order to do the, what is going on stuff?
Yes, what I just presented to you is a request for a change order. We have BLA under contract currently to do the, not precise, the design analysis.
And the science.
For the existing phase, I skipped this earlier. My instructions as we started this, I believe, from Mr. Beal, were start working on what you got and start planning for the expansion. To that end, we have, we have been, we entered into contract a little over a year ago to perform the necessary hydrogeological assessment and study of the, of the property. This is a change order for BLA to conduct the same services into the expanded area. This will be part of the due diligence process, but this is, this is just a change order for them to move it, to come back in and do the, and continue their services into this new area as part of our investigation into having this free as a landfill site.
And you have those funds in your notes, if I were you?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Motion in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes, gentlemen.
I'll, I'll just say closer, and I'll answer your question again. I have a total of five different contracts that we will be executing, the others are not required of any action, and I do have the money, but it's good for all of them, we're anticipating, and I have the money, but. And to that end, I can now say after this action, we will be on the property tomorrow. We will begin phase one site assessment, I'll have drill rigs on the property next week, and will most likely within the next two weeks have a core and start working on jurisdiction and combination, and we're, I got to hit the ground now. I've got, like I said, I've got six months to do two years worth of work, so I'm going to install it.
Didn't say a good job.
I hope you won't judge me just on this, because I'm, I'm afraid I might, but we're going to do everything we can. Absolutely.
Motion to the gentleman, second. I'll take the aye. I like to see the chairman, the vice president, and all the sort of that's like.